Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our July Board Meeting. We just got done with a work session and then a little budget meeting. We have board members who need to go to the restroom. If you could be patient, as one goes and another will come back and we'll just work that way. I would like to call this meeting to order. We'll begin with a pledge allegiance by LaMista and we'll have a quick prayer by Paul.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, as we humbly bow our heads this night at this meeting, we ask for thee to be here to influence those things that are said and for the decisions that are made that we may do the best we can for those that we serve. We are so grateful for the free country in which we live in and for those that citizens and staff and employees that want to make their concerns known. May we be receptive, may we understand, may we be able to utilize our best abilities to make correct choices with thy influence. We're grateful again for the many gifts that thou gives to us for all that we have and mostly for the ability to live in such a free country and to do as we please. And we're thankful for that. We ask thee to always influence those that make those decisions that we may keep it that way. In this I say in Jesus' name, amen.
Real quickly, before we move on, I'm going to take a little bit of latitude here. Last month's meeting was the week after the 80th anniversary of D-Day. And I had intentions of pointing that out and expressing gratitude and we just got going and I didn't do it. I don't have an excuse as to why I did not do that. But I wanted to take a minute today and recognize the greatest generation that's ever existed. And if there are any veterans out in our audience, would you please stand up? Thank you so much. I know the era that we live in and the war that you most likely were involved in. And we, as a country, weren't super great welcoming you home. And I just want to tell you from this position, we are grateful for you, we're thankful for your sacrifice, and we're thankful for those who are currently in the military taking care of us now. So I wanted to take that opportunity. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything?
God, I appreciate you saying that. And we just get so busy that we forget sometimes the important things. And that's very important, very, very important. And we appreciate those who've served and give us the rights and privileges that we have because without you, we may not have those. And we ask that the Lord may bless those that are serving now with safety and strength and health to perform those duties that they have, which are not, a lot of times, very easy. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to say? Kelly, we just took a minute to recognize that we did not recognize last month the 80th anniversary of D-Day. So we just said a quick thank you to the veterans. If anybody has anything else to say? Okay. We love and appreciate you. All right. Item 5.1, approval of meeting minutes.
A motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 6.1, ratification of expenses and payroll vouchers, tax credits, and activity accounts.
I move to approve as presented. One second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 7, 7.1, this is called to the public. We have one person and I hope that you read the requirements of what we asked. We're going to give you three minutes for your comments. I believe we do have a timer there. And Pastor Powell, if you'll come up, we'd love to hear from you. Please state your name for us.
Jim Powell.
James. Jim. I've got a couple of questions and then from there we can go. But first of all, are we teaching the Bible in our public schools? And if not, why not? Because the founder of our public schools, Benjamin Rush, in the 18th century, implemented the Bible as the criteria, as the textbook. And we've fallen away from that. In the 60s, we pulled away from it and all that. And we now have other people in other states producing the Bible back into the public school. And I'm asking, can we, here on the Cholo School District, re-implement that because of the values that it presents to our people, to my children and my grandchildren that attend the public schools here in Cholo? My kids are grown up, but I've got grandkids coming in. So... And then with that, the other one is the Ten Commandments. We've removed the Ten Commandments off the walls. And all of these things are in history. Okay? Why have we removed them? Why can we not put them back? Because they present the moral laws of the land, the moral laws of our God Almighty. And the third one is, in the Constitution, in our federal laws, we are to set aside one day a year, September 17th, for the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, to be taught in our public schools. Are we doing that? And if not, why? Because it is a federal law. And you can look that up. I don't have it with me. I don't have the US whatever that is. But I do have a copy of the Constitution of the United States here. And I'm sure you guys know the Constitution. If you have not read it, I encourage you to read it. I read it several years ago and it was brought to my attention about certain rights and stuff and I couldn't remember. So I revisited these things and upon that. And now my granddaughter, who's going to start first grade, you know, I'm concerned for her health and well-being. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So just so the public knows, we're not allowed to address those questions. But what we can do is we can ask our superintendent to research that, put together a little report for us where we can address it on a formal agenda item. Okay? Thank you. Anybody else? I don't have anybody else. So this is the one I have. Okay, thank you. Moving on, 8.1, Culinary Arts School-Based Business Enterprise. Mr. Crawford. Do you want to come up and visit with us?
Sure. I've got to put on my glasses. I'm getting old. All right, I submitted this in speaking with Mrs. Davis and Karen, the person before, found out that there are some things with CTSOs and the CTE programs that we at least need to advise the board of what we are doing for the coming year. We're not really seeking permission. So, and I was told I need to keep this under three minutes. My timer is gone, so I'll do the best I can. The Culinary Arts classes and their CTSO program, which is FCC LA demanded by the state, we are required by state law to operate a school-based enterprise. And we are required by law to operate the CTSO and have work-based learning. So what I'm doing is presenting those to you as to what we will be doing this year. Same thing we do pretty much every year. And we would be running tailgating, which is an opportunity for the students to work in an interaction with the customers, with the people that come and visit. It's better than doing it in the classroom where you get the simulations, but then people want to become pains and not do it correctly. You know, they get to interact with real customers. They get to prep the food. They get to clean up the food. They get to sell the food, make the food, and run a point-of-sale system, which is all required by my standard 11 in culinary arts. The next one that they're going to be doing is, and the tailgating is done at all home varsity football games. We set up a little bit early. We shut down at halftime so that the kids can get home at a decent hour and not be cleaning up forever. And we do Friday breakfast, where at the beginning of school on Fridays, since it is the Friday mastery day. This all came about because of a freezer breaking down on me. We actually make breakfast for the staff, students. They're charged a fee. The students just have to pay me whatever they can afford, so we're not making them pay a huge fee. If they give me a quarter, they get to eat. I don't care. But again, it gives the students an opportunity to prep the food, make the food, cook it, serve it in a buffet style, and then clean it up. They also do Feast of Carols.
What time is your breakfast?
I'm only going to tell you if you promise to show up.
Yeah, when to when?
7:15. Every Friday, we start serving. Ben asks us to do that because on a certain Fridays, he has a meeting that he wants to have the staff do before they go to class.
7:15 to 8:30?
7:15 to 9 o'clock.
9 o'clock.
Yeah. And it starts on the third Friday of August. We'll be starting that on the third Friday of August. I have a rotation that we go through where we do different items, so they're not always cooking the same thing. And one of them, they have to make eggs to order for the staff. So they make burritos to order at another one. So they get to have a lot of fun with it and do some different things. And again, it's that interaction, that live work-based learning, which helps me develop to go out into the industry and be ready to interact with customers. We do Feast of Carols, which is a banquet-style serving, so they get to see different styles of serving. The kids ask that we also include cookie sales, pie and cake and dinner roll sales this year. Whether they happen or not, I wanted to put it on the list so that we were aware that it was a potential that was going to happen. All of this is done, again, to get the students to be interactive with a customer base and not just with fellow students. And the community is invited to attend any and all events. And I thank you for your time.
Perfect. Thank you. Have any questions?
Wonderful. Thank you. It's wonderful. I read your whole presentation and it's exciting, you know, to see that they're going to have that much interaction in all the different roles. So thank you for all you do.
What question? For the public's sake, are you asking for donations? Like, would they come to the breakfast? Is it donation-based?
Five dollars, except for students.
Okay.
Whatever they can afford.
Okay.
They don't want to, I mean, the first year we did this, we actually had students who were coming to school on Friday simply to get breakfast because they weren't getting it at home.
Perfect.
But yeah, it's five dollars for breakfast and then the tailgating has its own pricing.
Any other pricing we ought to know about? I mean, obviously cookies you'll charge and fries you'll...
Eighth-pound hot dogs are two bucks, up to five dollars for hamburgers and cheeseburgers.
Did you say eight-pound hot dog?
Quarter pound. Yeah, eighth of a pound.
Eighth of a pound, sorry.
Eighth of a pound of a little...
I was like, that's a big hot dog.
I want an eight-pound hot dog.
That's a family dog.
Yeah. About this big.
That's a family dog.
Just a small dog.
Okay.
No, it's an eighth of a pound. It's a little one for younger people.
Okay.
And then we have a quarter pound for the adults.
Right.
But yeah, there's a fee. It helps us fund anything we do. It also funds our CTSO program. So none of that is put on the school. It's all self-funded by the students through these activities.
So you think that through these prices and the activities you have, you can fund yourself?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's one of the thirsting the kids do when they start school, is I will have them price out each and every menu item and then come up with a price that would fund their program for the year and then leave a little extra to start the next year before we actually get any of this stuff.
What a valuable program.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Beautiful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 8.2, First Reading Board Policy Update, Title IX. Mr. Farnsworth, are you going to visit with us on this one?
So there's no action on this. This is a first reading, but I do want to share with you that this is submitted to us from the Trust, who does our board policies. Title IX is currently being litigated against at the federal level. So there are potential changes coming down the pipe. We don't know what they are because we're waiting on legislation to dictate to us. I just wanted to get this in front of you so you're aware of what the current policy should be, but that's going to be subject to change. This is not going to be the last time we talk about Title IX. So purely informational at this point. If it's good with the board, we will bring this back for a second reading and potential adoption, but it could change by then.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Not at this time. Long document.
Item 8.3, Superintendent Report. Dr. Farnsworth.
So thank you, Mr. President. I would first like to publicly thank the governing board of Cholo for hiring me and for each of your support individually. It's been a pleasure to kind of get to know each of you. My first couple of weeks have been fantastic and I anticipate that that's going to continue. So I just want to publicly thank you, the community, the warm reception that I received from the staff. And I would also like to point out, I want to publicly thank our principals, our directors, staff members that are here. So thank you to all of you for being here. It means a lot. So happy to be here. I'm thrilled.
We're happy to have you too.
Thank you.
Very much.
The second item that I would like to share with you is that I'm going to find a vendor that sells a 10-pound hot dog. Outdo Mr. Crawford. Because if he's got an eight-pound hot dog, I'm going to find a 10-pound hot dog.
Duck and all beef, no fillers?
Yes.
Call Nathan's, please.
Just so you all know what's going on, and you've received my weekly reports. So just so the public knows, I've started sending the school board weekly emails every Friday outlining some of the points of my week. So I've walked every campus to date with each building principal and with our director of operations. And that's been a wonderful experience to see the buildings, to see, talk with the principals, to see what they're doing on their campuses, and to hear the needs that they have. And so I have a list that we'll be working through throughout the next couple of years. I've had the pleasure of conducting one-on-one interviews with every staff member in the district office, I think. I think I've got everybody. So that's been a wonderful thing. Let's see here. I've met the city manager, the assistant city manager. I have appointments to meet with them, again, with some city council members to start ensuring that we have a great partnership together. I've reached out to our state and House of Representatives. I did get an email back from our state representative. I have not received an email back from our House of Representative person. The last item that I just want to share with you is, just because I want to make sure going forward, you have information and that there's transparency. Nicholas Homestead Elementary School is currently working through TSI, Targeted School Improvement by the State of Arizona. It's been in TSI for a number of years. And so I want to publicly thank Chris Jones, who has been on numerous calls and Zoom calls with ADE, trying to figure out what's been happening. And so I just want to publicly thank her. And I also want to report that her and the other two elementary principals, Beth Marsh and Sharla Cosgrave, we got together and we really started looking at the staffing at Nicholas Homestead, specifically figuring out how can we get class sizes down to a manageable number because they were high. And so I'm pleased to report, we have people in place, which I will contact those individuals, but we are looking now in fourth and fifth grade, 26 per teacher, which was way better than where we were three days ago. So I just want to publicly thank them for doing a great job on that. And we will be coming back with a more detailed report in September, is my goal, specifically about Nicholas Homestead and where we are on targeted school improvement and what does that mean and what do we need to do. And then you also see some upcoming events. There's a couple of events that, if you haven't RSVP'd to Courtney, if you could please let her know. And we're working through some of those logistics for upcoming conferences. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments? I have a couple of things I'd like to say. First of all, when we were going through the hiring process and we held a community visit with the candidates, then we also held a staff visit. What did we call them? Do you remember what we called them?
Meeting greets?
Yeah, meeting greets. Meeting greets. And I just wanted you to know the overwhelming desire of our staff and interest in you. And so I hope you know that and you take that accordingly. The other thing I would ask you to do is, previously, we had the opportunity to have a sit-down meeting with the city council, the mayor and the city council. I'd like to go back to that if we're all good with that. I thought that was a good opportunity for us to meet face-to-face with them and, most importantly, express our gratitude for the things that they do for us. I know we do things for them also, but, you know, things like letting us use this menu to hold this meeting and many other, you know, way above and beyond that. But if we can get back to that, a little short meeting, I would like that.
Absolutely.
Otherwise, that's it. Anybody else have any comments on his report? Yeah, absolutely.
Since we're getting back to where we used to be, I would like to hear a report from our principals at this meeting. Doesn't have to be long, just to let us know what's kind of going on from their perspective. It was important to me in the past and I think it's something we need to get back to. Second thing, I'm so thrilled to have you here. I think we hit a home run on this one. Did you have any input on hiring this young lady over here?
That was on the committee. Yes, sir.
Pat the committee on the back for me, would you? I'm excited about where we're going. I'm excited about who we have and the knowledge that we have. And we need to necessarily turn anything around, just do our job, help them, help us do our job better. I'm thrilled about that. And I thank you for that opportunity.
In full disclosure, she and I worked together previously as a business manager and superintendent, and you will not find a harder working...
I knew it.
Person.
I knew it.
You won't.
I didn't say we would.
But thank you. Yeah. I'm impressed.
Can I throw something out, Paul?
Throw it.
In piggyback on your report from the principals, is that something that we can have in email form or do we want to take the time in this meeting? We can talk about it later. I just...
I'm open to whatever.
The more things we put in this meeting, we'll be here till midnight. I'm just saying. I'm just...
In the past, I know that we used to receive board reports from all of the principals and it was included in the board packet and it just kind of gave an update of what's going on, you know?
Did they come up here and...
No.
Yeah, I didn't remember that.
Yeah, once in a while they would if there was something to congratulate or, you know, or different, you know, accolades. But we used to do a monthly board report. Maybe that would be something that would be ideal.
And I think that's correct.
I want to make it easy on them.
Yeah, I want to make it easy. Me too.
We don't need to give everyone a bunch of meetings.
No, 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 no. That's not what I'm talking about.
They have to come to their mom. But they have others. There's a lot of other more important things that they're involved in that...
Well, I think that's pretty important.
It is.
No, you're right.
But if they have a whole bunch of events already going on that actually impact the kids...
I agree with that.
...that they need to be there for, you know, I wouldn't want them to miss that because they have them here.
Nor would I.
But I like the idea of getting some sort of regular communication directly from them. And then if there's anything specific that it would be appropriate for them to come for, that would be great to hear from them more.
And I'm happy with an email or, you know, if something's important they want to come and report to the board about, I'm happy with that too.
Yeah.
I'm just happy, so.
One more question. Board members, were you aware that Nicholas was in a TSI?
Yes. Yeah.
Not till a couple of days ago.
I was not.
I didn't know.
And I didn't know we worked for several years, so I wonder how they...
I find that to be pretty interesting. I am excited about who's heading up that school. 9.1, Adopt 24-25 Budget.
I'll make motion to adopt the 24-25 budget as presented. One second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 9.2, Review School and Staff Handbooks. Is there anything that, anybody has any questions or concerns about anything within these individual handbooks?
I did email about a couple of things I thought should be looked at, but they, none of them were, I typed over here, something like, oh, is this really, I don't think it's anything we need to uphold, keep from, that really needs to be discussed here or that needs to be keeping anything from being approved.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that if your concerns become something you're worried about, we get back to it and give it in front of us again.
There's nothing I'm worried about, just, I'm that person. I'm sorry. I'm the one who goes, oh, I think you made a mistake here. Maybe you should fix it.
You mean you met him?
I got back from my vacation on Monday night and this is all I did on Tuesday, was read these handbooks. So...
Bless your heart.
Yes, bless your heart.
I had a friend... A couple of you might get some email forwarded from Dr. Farnsworth, but...
So with that said, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve is presented. One second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 9.3, Classified Personnel and Employment. Dr. Farnsworth, do you want to do anything here or does anybody have any questions or concerns or...
No, I just want to recommend that we hire Lisa Hall, Sasha Kinney, Joanne Diamato, Lori Graves, and Joshua Fussell.
And the substitute.
And the substitute.
And I didn't scroll down.
Leon Weaver. Okay.
Sorry, Leon.
I move to present the person I, I mean, classified personnel is presented. One second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 9.4, Classified Transfers, Resignations, and Terminations. Mr. Farnsworth.
Again, we have some resignations. Melissa Brimhall, Janelle Henderson, Orlando Vallejos, Renee Backman, Jewel Plower, Stacy Johnston, Mandy Cantrell, Samuel Shipitalo. I apologize for our classified resignations.
I move to approve the classified employee actions as presented. One second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 9.5, Certified Personnel and Employment. Mr. Farnsworth.
Again, recommending for certified teachers and employment, Janay Farnsworth, Carolyn Prather, Tiffany Rector, Vanessa Kinney, Robert Nobles, Sarah Hart, and Dalton Jackson to be hired. And off-contract work, we also have at the bottom to approve Heather Alsobrook.
I make motion to approve as presented with a big welcome. Thank you. One second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 9.6, Coaching Personnel and Employment.
Recommend we hire the lists produced by our athletic director as recommended.
I move to approve all coaching personnel employment as presented. One second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 9.7, Administrative Personnel and Employment.
There's a recommendation. I did start a week before my contract officially started, so if... so it would be nice to get paid for that.
I thought you were just coming to.
If you don't, that's okay. It, it was time well spent.
After the fact, we can say that.
Also, we, we have a, a big resignation in our operations director, Sean West, has, has been recruited to another school district in the valley and we're so happy for him that it's a, this is a big deal for him.
Oh, no.
But he's, he's left pretty big shoes.
You know how hot it is down there?
He sure did. And, and I asked that if, if we accept his resignation, that we waive the liquidated damage clause in his contract, which is $2,500.
I'm not even going to ask for a, what do you call it? You're killing my smiles.
I'll make motion to approve as presented and rest of bushes. Mr. West? A second. Thanks for everything you've done, Sean. I'll miss you.
Congratulations, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Me.
I will say that he has agreed to continue to work with us through some of, some major items that we still have going on, so we're going to be sharing him with, with the new district and I believe he will follow up on his end and help us get up, make sure we are on a good trajectory.
Motion passes. Nine point eight, event workers.
Well, I'd like to give you guys just a little bit of his context in regards to this list because it's the same list. So through our audit, one of the struggles that our athletic director faces is that throughout the course of the athletic season, we may not have a referee or someone to work the game table or do the clock or, or take, take money and so it becomes a last minute, like who, who can come in and help us do this, do this event? And so we may grab a, a teacher or a paraprofessional or, or someone else of that nature and then it becomes an audit finding because it's an after a fact, after the fact payment. So what we're proposing is that we're going to approve the entire district, bus drivers, custodians, janitors, teachers, admin. So in the event there is a, a, a situation and he needs to pull someone, that this would be his first list to find someone to work the junior high volleyball clock and it's not going to be an audit finding because they've already been approved for the whole school year. So it's not that they're approved to work, but they're basically being approved to work in case we need them in an emergency. And it's voluntary, right? But this will help us clear up any audit findings moving forward.
It's a smart thing to do. A motion to approve the event worker employment as presented. A second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Nine point nine, longevity and cell phone stipends.
We had a great list of staff members who have a lot of longevity in the district. It's kind of fun to see that.
Some of them are so surprising.
I know. We've been here forever.
That long.
I know, I love it. So with the big thanks, I motion to approve the longevity and cell phone stipends as presented. A second.
I have a motion in a second, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Nine point one zero, athletic stipends twenty-four, twenty-five.
I move to approve as presented. A second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Nine point one one, off contract work.
Again, we're, we're recommending that these individuals, Taylor Rogers, Tanya Butler, Janee Farnsworth, Amanda Incarnation and Devin Jamison work extra to get their special education training up and going. At the junior high, we have curriculum work that's being done. And then also we have a recommendation for a paraprofessional to help out at Whipple Elementary. They had a lot of camps and summer school at the campus and just trying to get it up ready for students to return again.
I move to present, or I move to approve as presented. Sorry.
Did you say second?
I did.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Nine point one two, auditorium manager stipend.
Okay, let, let me give you, give you some context. So there was a, a personal action request for payment signed by the previous superintendent and so there was some research that we needed to do to find out, is it for this past year or is it for this year? And we, we discovered that the, the process wasn't really followed. And so through some research today, we've made some phone calls, I've, I've called Ms. Whipple, I think Courtney called Kevin and we were able to figure out what the situation was. So that's why you see two different personal action requests. So the correct personal action request is for, let me make sure I get the right one, for the lesser amount because it's from last year's stipend fee schedule. Because the, this coming year, the stipends were increased and so-
Based on the base pay.
Correct. So I wanted to show you the old one, which was signed by Kevin, so we're not using that one. So the new one is signed by Ms. Davis, the business manager, with the correct amount and that's the recommendation that, that I'm asking for. It's for last year. I don't know why she didn't get paid.
Because it was on the stipend schedule and, but it wasn't paid out to her?
Correct. So the stipend schedule was approved, but for some reason, her name to get the stipend was not approved and so that was the conversation between Kevin and Ms. Whipple, but it had the incorrect amount, it had this year's amount.
Right, I was, yeah, I was very confused, when I was, that's why I reached out about it, I was very confused because I said, we already passed this last month, this is, so thank you for clarifying and researching that to figure out what was, what was up with it. When people get like a year long stipend, does it go in every paycheck or is it lump sums every semester? How does that work?
What I understood from our HR specialist is that it's spread out through the whole year.
And so for this past year, she didn't receive that stipend and so now this would be a bulk payment? I mean, it's one of, how many seconds does she have?
That's true. I'll move to approve this stipend as presented. A second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Nine point one three, choir stipend correction.
Move to approve the choir stipend correction as presented. A second.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Nine point one four, consulting engagement services with Heinzfeld Meach. Mr. Farnsworth? This one yours?
So, and, and Shaylee, if she wants to pipe in, she's more than welcome to. So we, this is a letter to secure our consultant on the business side, Karen Smith, for another year and she represents Heinzfeld Meach. Just so you all know, I've had a meeting with, with Karen and with Shaylee and Karen has assured us that she's going to be finishing up the twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-four audit. And so you're going to see Shaylee taking, taking point on the twenty-five school year moving forward, Karen kind of closing out the twenty-four audit and then transitioning all towards Shaylee moving forward. So there's going to be components where Karen's going to be presenting this year, Shaylee's presenting this year, they're both co-presenting. We have Karen coming up in the next couple of weeks to do like a full day training with the goal of basically transitioning to Ms. Davis to run point for this school year on all business matters. And so just wanted you to be aware, we're still, we would recommend that you approve the contract for one more year to use Karen and, and Karen is in agreement that Ms. Davis should be transitioned as the point person, but Karen is there to kind of act as oversight and support and help us be a second pair of eyes, but the goal is that she's going to be, if we do this right, that it's going to be transitioning out. Because she's not cheap, but she's good, but she's not cheap. But that's, that's the plan and so we, we recommend that you approve her for another year.
It sounds great.
We're not, we're not paying the full contract price for what we paid last year, we're paying a portion.
Well, we're paid by the hour, so there will be fewer hours that we're paying.
Yeah, right. That's a great idea.
I'm really glad that we're looking and doing this because it will help you too, Shaylee, with the transition.
The foundation.
Yeah, and so anyway, I'm grateful that you'll have her as a source, you know, to call upon. I encourage you to use her as you need her, you know, to make sure you feel good and you feel supported in what you're doing for us. So thank you. So with that, I'll move to motion to approve the services.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Nine point one five, policy four dash three oh two change.
Ms. Davis, do you want to speak about this one, about the leave?
So as we were reviewing this policy, as we were updating visions, we noticed that there was a inconsistency in the vacation leave payout. So if you notice the, the red piece there, it says upon separation of employees whose employment with the district ends voluntarily or upon mutual agreement with the board. It originally just said administration compensated up to forty-eight hours, but administration gets forty-eight hours, support staff only gets fifteen.
Days, not hours.
Days, sorry, thank you, days. And so we needed to separate that where it said administration got forty-eight and support got fifteen. And so this is making that adjustment to this policy, so that's what this is about.
I move to approve policy four, three oh two as presented with the changes.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion at all?
I do. Can somebody remind me why we changed our classified to only fifteen days rather than forty-eight so that it's the same?
I just wonder if this was a mistake when we switched over to the trust last year?
Just an oversight? I just don't remember why we did that.
Because if you look at the paragraph above, it does say fifteen, so it's unclear why there was that confusion in the next paragraph below.
Right. I just don't remember why we changed it to fifteen. I was hoping somebody could remind me, but.
Did we change it or has it been that way for quite a while?
I think it was changed and I don't remember why. It just seems a little inconsistent, that's all.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Nine point one six, WMI reading coach.
This is a new proposal that for WMI, that they get a part-time position and it's paid out of a grant, the systemic school improvement grant, and so there's no financial impact to Sholo School District. And so we recommend that you approve this position as stated in the letter.
It sounds like a great use of, of that grant. So I move to approve the hiring of a White Mountain Institute reading coach as presented.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
How many people did we have in the White Mountain Institute?
As of last year, talking with Ms. Roach, we were around eighty-six, I want to say. Seventy to eighty-six, so depending upon different times of the year, the enrollment fluctuates, but they have a waiting list, honestly, and so, I mean, we could, we're looking for opportunities to expand where it may go up to hire, but we just don't have the facilities at the moment.
And reading is an area that we really need to improve on at that institute. Very good.
Okay, so that motion pa, or, yeah, motion passes. Nine point one si, one seven, excuse me, sole source bender.
I move to approve as presented.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Nine point one eight, non-designated gifts and donations.
Well, I'd like to thank Ben, our high school principal. This is something that the auditor brought forward, that if there's undesignated monies from tax credit, that we need board permission, that we could use this in feeding staff members at different times of the year. And so we recommend, so we took his letter and, and wrote a letter for the district that if there's any undesignated site funds, so if the, if the junior high has funds that aren't designated for choir or band or whatever, that the principal can use that for a variety of reasons. One of those would be, you know, hey, feeding staff for Christmas or Thanksgiving or something like that.
I'm so glad that we can use the funding that way. You know, that wasn't always available to us. So anyway, I motion to approve as presented.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Nine point one nine, school properties disposal.
I motion to approve as presented.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Nine point two zero, gifts and donations. Looks like we have donation from the White Mountain Autism Foundation going to the High School National Honor Society Robotics Club. Am I missing anything?
With a big thank you, I move to approve as presented. A second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for those generous donations. Nine point two one, out of state field trip. Soccer out of state field trip.
Is this a club or is this a?
It's just a preseason tournament.
Will you fill, fill us in on this and, and then we also want to, at some point we want to talk about the fact that we were going to hold the line with what we've been doing so far until we can get-
A new system.
Yeah, a new idea of what exactly we want to do. I think the last thing we want to do is have told kids, yes, you can go do this and now, no, you guys can't. So in the, in the spirit of, of being fair and equitable, take it from there.
Okay. The one you have in front of you is for the girls soccer AIA season, they're, one of their tournaments, they get two tournaments a year. That's one of their tournaments in Rehoboth, New Mexico. We proved that one, it's actually going to be cheaper and more cost effective. They've been going for at least the past two years since I've been here to that particular term. They won it both years, actually. But that is their AIA season, so that wouldn't be part of the discussion we're having. We give them mini buses and, and get them hotels and stuff and that's the one in front of you. The one that I got late that I didn't send to you yet, that I can scan tomorrow or whatever, we can put it on August and post date or whatever, is a request for a preseason tournament in Albuquerque. Their season's going to start July twenty-ninth, their trials are going to start. They would like to go July twenty-sixth and twenty, through the twenty-eighth, excuse me, so a three-day trip to Albuquerque to play a preseason tournament, which in essence, I mean, we can, we can go across, if it's going to be a school team, a club team, whatever, whatever, whatever. The question handed is, do we want to give them too many buses to go to the preseason tournament in Albuquerque, knowing they're going to pay for their own gas and their own hotel? The one you have in front of you is an AIA thing, which I would recommend, it's, it's actually closer and cheaper than them going to Tucson or Phoenix to play. So that's the one you have, I would recommend to approve. The one I didn't send you, first of all, because I got it late, second of all, because I wanted to have a discussion as to where we're going with this stuff, so.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
That one that you were talking about?
I can pass it around. I didn't scan it in.
It's okay, it's going to be before our next meeting. What I would, what I would propose, if y'all are okay with this, I'd like to have, even if we do it all telephonically, just a quick one to, to do that beforehand so that we don't have any issues-
No, we don't like doing things-
Post dating.
Yeah, I agree.
Right, post dating, right.
I'm glad to hear you say that because that's, since it's not on the agenda, that's not something we could vote for.
Right, we're not even going to talk about it.
I like the idea of doing a telephonic.
Yeah.
We can note, we can post the agenda.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, can I, can I ask a question? How many, how many club teams have we already allowed to go do things this summer?
This summer, we had our-
The agenda item. This is just, this is just to approve one out of state field trip, so that should be-
You're right.
That should be a larger conversation.
Their AIA trip, Rehoboth, New Mexico, towards middle, to the end of August. I'd recommend just approve that one, I think it's a great trip.
Okay, so the one, the one before is that we have the copy here, I'll entertain a motion to approve- a motion to approve.
I'll motion to approve, I'll second.
I have a motion in a second, any other discussion about this particular one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Please, get with us on that one.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll talk about that one, when we're all-
And we have it adjourned, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, item ten point one, I'll entertain an adjournment until our next meeting, which would be August tenth, twenty-four, not twenty-three, is it August tenth, is that correct?
Yeah.
It's, uh, eighth, be the eighth, August eighth would be our next meeting.
Yep, I move to adjourn.
All second? I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, motion passes, we're adjourned, thank you all for coming out tonight, thanks for the great information.